Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call this regular scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It's Thursday, October 26th, and the time is 7:12. Ashley, could we have a roll call, please?
All present?
Oh. Yeah, by name. No problem.
We have Brian Lowell.
I am here.
Patricia Korsak.
Present.
Jeffrey Barnes.
Present.
Ray Baker.
Here.
Jeffrey Sims. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all stand and face the flag? Thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda for October 26th, 2017. That's probably not right.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
No, second.
Yeah, what date are we approving?
Approval of today's agenda.
Oh, the agenda, duh.
Yeah, you're doing it.
Once again, the chair has fallen down. My apologies. We had a motion from Commissioner Sims.
I'll second.
Two seconds. Commissioners Baker and Lowell.
Come on, Patricia, get in.
We're gonna, we're gonna try this system that we explained to you at the beginning, so the motion and the second.
All right.
Motion.
From Commissioner Sims.
Commissioner Sims made the motion.
Seconded by Lowell.
So the chair no longer runs the vote button?
No.
Yeah, we're adopting to the city clerks.
There's a new sheriff in town. All votes have been cast. The, end the vote.
It's a learning curve.
Motion carries five to nothing.
Mr. Chair, just if I may.
Yes.
Just for the record, since we are live on TV and some people may be observing us, I do want to mention then for the rest of people here and Commissioner Lowell, who has just arrived, we are trying to adopt the same process that the city clerk's office is using with the recording secretary. So if we go through a couple of little glitches this evening, I just want to apologize up front. I also want to take a second just to introduce Ashley Precio. She's our new recording secretary and administrative assistant in our planning division. Thank you.
Welcome, Ashley. Thank you very much for your help this evening. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Only item being the approval of the minutes from the meeting of August 24th, 2017. Motion from Commissioner Baker, second from Commissioner Korsak.
I was not present at that meeting, so I will be abstaining.
And Commissioner Lowell will not be voting, since he was not in attendance. So please vote. Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the public comments portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to speak, please fill out a request to speak form and present it to Ashley.
We do have one.
We have one speaker. If you could call him forward, please.
Rafael Bures.
Bures.
I apologize.
He'll learn to pronounce it, because he'll.
Thank you.
Speak on occasion.
Welcome aboard, Ashley.
Thank you.
Chair, commissioners, staff, and guests. I'm the only resident here tonight. I'm grateful to be back in the chamber again from Tuesday, because that was an exciting, an exciting meeting. One out of the two got passed, and that is going to be pertaining to this planning commission. It's a shame that we couldn't get the ban extended, because that would have helped the staff to have a little bit more time to make sure everything that they're going to be doing with Allen Block, Rick Sanderman, to make sure that when you get a project to be built in this city, or an entrepreneur to bring a business to sell marijuana, you'll be prepared. So I'm hoping that as the months that we wait for this bill to come out and to get approved, that somehow you'll be ready and trained in this area to understand what some of these entrepreneurs and developers want from us. Because it can harm the city, it can also help the city. It was a good fight Tuesday. I learned a lot. I learned that pride can get in the way also. I'm hoping that it never happened to this government. This is one of the governments that I fought for when I was talking on Tuesday. This is a very important government. Each one of you has played a great role in our city, in all parts, not just one district, but all four districts, that includes the whole city, all 210,000 of us. You're very important to us, and the staff here is very important to us. Prepare your hearts and your minds as things come forward. I don't know if it's going to be next month or in the new year, but we as a city must be ready with the new laws, new rules, and how to distribute and allow the sales of marijuana to flow through our city. Let's think about what we want to do in the future. Thank you so much, and I thank that Brian made it. I'm glad when I see five of yous up here. It's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bures. No other speakers?
No other speakers, sir.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, non-public hearing items. We have none.
We have none.
And public hearing items. Case one, PEN 16-0050, an applicant, application from Mac Jones Holdings Incorporated. We have a staff report?
We do. Associate Planner Jeff Bradshaw will be giving you this presentation.
Good evening, Chair Barnes, members of the Planning Commission. As you introduced, Chair Barnes, the applicant, Mac Jones, has submitted a subdivision application to the city for approval of tentative tract map 37060. This subdivision proposes to develop 16 lots on a 10-acre site that is located on the south side of Cottonwood Avenue in approximately 700 feet of, east of La Salle. The site's currently vacant. It has been maintained through recent history through weed abatement and is surrounded by comparable types of development. The land to the west has been developed with similar half-acre lots in the RA2 zone. The project site is zoned RA2. The land to the east, in a similar fashion, has either been subdivided or developed with half-acre homesites. And the properties to the north and south, as you can see in the exhibit, have been developed with tract homes in the R5 zone. The applicant is asking the city to support a subdivision here that's consistent with the RA2 zone. The 16 lots being proposed are all at least 20,000 square feet in size, which is consistent with that zone. Again, surrounding properties are, have been developed or subdivided with comparable lots, and so the proposal is consistent with the general plan, the zoning for the site, and with existing or established development for that area. Staff worked in the preparation of a mitigated negative declaration for the project, and through the completion of an initial study, determined that with mitigation, this project would not result in any significant environmental impacts. A mitigation monitoring program was also prepared for the project to ensure implementation of those mitigation measures. The project, excuse me, notice for the project was completed by our city standard with a publication in the newspaper notifying the preparation of the mitigated negative declaration. The site was posted 10 days in advance of the hearing, and notices were sent out to property owners within 300 feet of the site as well. As of tonight, had received only one phone call in response to those noticing efforts. It was a property owner that lives in a home immediately to the west. His property went back to this development. He stated he was in support of the project and just had questions about the availability of sewer service to that area. With that, staff would, staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission would be to certify the environmental documentation that's been prepared for the project and to approve the tract map as conditioned and as presented to you this evening. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jeff. Would the commissioners ask any questions? Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Sorry, did have my red light on. So lots C and B are the water quality lots or small detention basins, I assume?
Yes, in this case, a little bit unique proposal for the water quality treatment, rather than a single basin, there's three water quality treatment facilities proposed. There's a linear treatment facility on Lot 1 along the street frontage, and then lots 12 and 13 both have water treatment facilities in lettered lots on both those sites.
In those lettered lots, they're maintained by the city? Or is that a HOA, or how's that taken care of?
They would be maintained by the city, but with an HOA required of the project, like with other subdivisions, to, as a backup or support to that process, with the city being compensated through, through the HOA.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to make a presentation or a statement?
Hello, my name is Dan Webb. I'm from Mac Jones. I just want to thank everybody for coming, and I want to thank the planning department for working well with my team, and I really have nothing else to add. It's, I think it's a really nice project for the area, and it fits in well with the zoning, and fits in well with the neighbors, and I think it should go, should go well.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. The last tentative map expired. What is your timeframe for this project? Do you envision sitting on it for a few years, or are you ready to dig a shovel of dirt tomorrow?
I, it's, you know, it depends on the market. It's really close right now in terms of, you know, because since you're requiring me to have such large acreage, it's, it puts it up into a, you know, a pretty, it's, you know, I was lucky to buy the land at a pretty attractive price, and that benefit's going to be passed through to the city of Moreno Valley, because I can afford to keep these big lots where a lot of other people can't. The market's like right there. And so my goal is to do it in the next year or two, but I'm just, you know, really identifying the comps right now and seeing if I can make some money on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, while you think about it, I have a couple of questions. On one of the previous meetings we had discussed, I thought adding the number of extensions to the condition that addresses the expiration date of the map.
Mr. Chairman, are you, apologize for maybe interrupting, but are you going to be talking about the project and deliberating on the project, or would you like to conduct a public hearing first? Because it does require a public hearing.
Yeah, thank you. Don't, don't we normally ask questions of the staff?
That's why I was, I was trying to get clarification, if you're going to be asking staff questions, or if you're getting into deliberations about the conditions of approval and the, and the project as a whole. But if it's still questions for staff, that's appropriate.
Well, they're questions regarding the conditions, but I wouldn't call them deliberation. It's just clarifications.
Okay.
Is, is that appropriate? Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, all right. So how many extensions would a project like this be entitled to?
The total map life under the map act would be eight years, and so there'd be an opportunity under separate applications to extend the life for a total of five, and in, by our code would be three years at a time, so the next extension would be three and then two.
Okay, so two more extensions, one three-year and one two-year. Okay.
Yes.
All right. And then condition P9 talks about the developer shall submit to review a document to convey title. Is that for the WQMP basins? I was, was a little unclear as to what they were conveying title to.
That, I believe, is something we'll want to correct in the conditions. In this case, the, the other intent of the HOA would be to retain fee ownership of the basins, not to turn those over to the city. And so A, I don't see as being applicable in this case.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Condition P11 makes reference to a slope erosion plan. What, I'm not familiar with that plan. Is that something that Land Development now requires, or?
I apologize, Chair Barnes, I was making notes on my conditions. Do you mind repeating the question?
Yeah, condition P11, prior to grading permit issuance, that condition makes a reference to a slope erosion plan?
Yes. So planning would require landscape in erosion, in irrigation, rather, for slopes that, that are over this three feet in height. It'd be private slopes in the rear yards.
Okay.
I, I'm going to recall in, in this tract if that applies. I know there's some transition slopes, but that, that's the intent of the, of the condition is to capture private slopes.
Okay, I just, that term was not clear to me. All right, thank you. Then condition P18 requires that knuckle and cul-de-sac lots provide off-streets parking for at least three cars. Is that unique to this project, or is that a condition that will be?
That is a condition that is an extension of a concern of the Planning Commission from some years ago. I don't know if anyone seated on the commission now that, that spoke to that, but during the mid-2000s, when development was moving very quickly, there was a concern that the subdivisions, as they were being proposed, weren't providing adequate parking within the neighborhood. And this was an effort to make sure that each, each homeowner would have sufficient space to, to park their vehicles.
Well, I don't want to wander into the area of deliberation, but I might want to discuss that further at, at some point, so. So will that condition become standard in future?
As Mr. Bradshaw articulated, it was a, an interest or a concern of a previous planning commission. It is not, as I understand it, codified in our municipal code for a parking requirement. When you consider the, the design of a cul-de-sac or knuckles, the consideration or the concern is that it has less street frontage because of the curve of the street. And so since cars that normally on a, on a typical just, you know, subdivision lot has curb frontage in front of their home, the ones at the ends of cul-de-sacs and knuckles don't. So if you allow for more parking on the site, then you're, you're addressing the issue.
Well, the reason I was curious about it is we've approved some projects in the past that have been fairly small lots, extremely small lots, and even rectangular lots facing a straight street have had very little lot frontage, and parking has been a concern, but.
The other thing I'd point out with this particular subdivision, it is a large lot subdivision, so these are half-acre lots. We don't have the, the actual site plans over the homes that are going to be placed, but usually on a half-acre lot or so, you're actually going to have, you know, larger driveways or side jars and other opportunities. It may not be necessary to actually put a, a condition in place like this. It would be probably belts and suspenders, because the, the actual design of the half-acre lot, you're probably going to end up with more parking.
Yeah, you're going to have much larger front setbacks and longer driveways, so. I was just curious, the source of that condition. I think the last question, I, oh, second to last question. Condition B5 from building and safety. Proposed residential project shall comply with the latest federal law, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There's no grandfathering that goes along with these conditions. If any of the statutes listed in there were to change, they would be required, in the case of all of those, to comply with the current?
It's my understanding that the building and fire codes are, are specific to health, public health, safety, and welfare type issues, so those codes, when they do change, are, the developments are subject to the ones that are in existence at the time of the development.
The, the issuance of a building permit would be the only thing that would really excuse a project from being held to a higher standard or a new requirement.
Right. I guess my question was, and it doesn't relate to just public, go ahead.
I was just asking for.
Oh, okay. What, what came to mind, it mentions Americans with Disabilities Act, so if next year the regulation is changed and two-story, two-story houses now require an elevator, would this project then be required to put in an elevator? Would be, would he be grandfathered to the current ADA standard?
What I think happens is that when you start pulling your permits, that is what codifies what criteria you're held to. So if you want to pull a building permit today, you're held to today's standards, but if you're pulling a grading permit or a building permit in 10 years, you'd be held to the 10 years, the standard that's in place in 10 years. So this is like a, a benchmark saying, hey, by the way, whatever, whenever you pull the permit, that's the standard you have to go to. It's just a statement.
The balance in the process is, you asked about extensions of time, so in, in three years' time, if the project's not been developed and they come to the city and ask for that extension, that'd be an opportunity for staff to revisit the conditions, not to place new conditions, but if, if standards or requirements have changed, we would update the conditions to reflect the, the most current standard in place at the time.
Just kind of caught me by surprise a little bit. All right, and then the last question I had concerns the grading on Lot 16. I was curious why that hill slope is contained entirely on 16 and not adjusted so that the top is on the property line, which is a more traditional configuration? Because in this scenario, the fence will be at the bottom of the slope, and the owner of 16, standing in his backyard, is going to look right down in 15 with really no slope hindering his view. He might not care, but the owner of 15 might.
Good evening, Chair. Michael Lloyd with Land Development. This was proposed by the applicant. I, I see your concern, so if, if you felt that was applicable and appropriate to put the wall at the top of the slope, staff would support that, and we would recommend a, a condition to reflect that.
We'll, we'll save that for the deliberation portion of our comments. I have no other questions. Anyone else? Or Sims?
What does the, there will, I guess my question is, is will, there will be an HOA on this development, these 16 lots?
There, there are no common areas, other than the basins, that would require an HOA, but by, by city requirement, the HOA has to be established because of the, the water quality basins.
And so what would be the limit and scope of what the HOA would control within the 16 lots? Just the water quality basins maintenance?
That's correct.
Wait, for, for a little bit of clarification in the staff report, we actually, the HOA has not yet been established. It would predominantly be for the water quality treatment basins, but one of the things we might want to work with the applicant on is the common area walls, particularly the perimeter walls, and any other things that might be of interest to, to the applicant to, to explore. We did write into the staff report that it would be at the discretion of the, of the applicant at this time, but it's not that we don't want to talk about it. If, if there's some interest at the commission, we'd be interested to hear back from it. I believe that a common area maintenance that's done, particularly for the exterior walls, the perimeter walls, if they're done consistently, it has a better image for the city. And if we allow each of the individual homeowners on the walls and fences to take care of them, is a likelihood you could get some inconsistencies, which we do see around town today, and, and so in the long haul, I'm looking at ways to improve that. And, you know, this is probably more of a question of the developer rather than the staff, but the, you know, the R5 is directly to the south of this, I guess that's, would be to the south of this. You know, why wouldn't if an R5 be appropriate for this, for development of this property? I, I guess in my opinion, if this is, and I, I don't know if this is in the overlay for the, what do we call that with the, the animal keeping?
The paco?
The paco, yeah, that's it.
It's outside of that area.
It's outside of the paco. So in 20,000, you know, I, I don't know if there is really animal keeping, so this is kind of a square peg in a round hole type of thing, you know. I, I just speak from experience, living on a half-acre parcel of my development that's been out there, probably 90% of the homes do not have yards. They are, half acre is a lot of property to try to maintain. And to me, and when you distinguish, like when, where in my neighbor, where my neighbor house, houses, our houses are, in comparison to the Richmond American homes that went in several years after our development went in, they downsized, they went into a change of zone and went to a third of acre lots, and they have an HOA that requires all the front yards to be maintained, and it's a significantly better development, much, much better. The, the house prices are higher, the, the feel, the look of the houses, and the, the streetscape is, is much, much better. So anyhow, long story short, I, I'm not opposed to a half acre, but it, it just seems this is, I don't know, just because it's R2 doesn't mean it's the right thing for the city to have more R2 where it's hard to maintain and meet a pricing point for a developer. I'd be happy to, to share some additional insight on that. It may fall into the, the discussion on the project, but just risking that we might go that far, I was going to tell you real quickly. This is something that, that we did consider as a staff. There, there's a nuance here, that the general plan land use designation for this site is R5. It's the zoning, the designation for the site, which is RA2, which is causing it to be developed at the two acres, the two dwellings per acre. If the applicant wanted to propose a R5-type development, it would require a zone change. That wasn't a request, so we've just reacted to the applicant's interest, and we've processed it, because it is consistent with the zoning, but there could be an option. It would just require another phase, you'd have to go through the zone change. So if you want to talk about that in a little more detail later, but I think we should probably open up the public hearing if there is anybody who wants to speak on it, or if the applicant wants to come back and, and maybe provide any input, so.
Fair enough. Let's suspend our question and answer period and open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
Yes, we do. We have Rafael.
Bures.
Again, commissioners, staff, and our guests. I went by this two days ago, because it's on Cottonwood, and what I, what, and Cottonwood is a major street. It goes from east to west, and is used constantly. And, and I, and, and the project is between Morrison and La Salle, more towards La Salle, okay? And finally, it's going to be occupied with homes. And I looked at the 20,000 half acre, and, and I understand what Mr. Sim was talking about, because I was talking to the developer, or to, or to the applicant, about that. because I was talking to the developer or to the applicant about that. And one of the things that caught my interest was the HOA. Because I know that Shadow Park, Mountain, Hinton Springs, Sonomy Ranch and Rancho Moreno Valley Ranch, they have HOAs. And they are required to keep the front always, at least 80% of the front with lawn, some kind of decor, landscaping, to make the property value stay up. And it's true, when you have something too big, it gets harder and harder to maintain. Especially if you work outside of the city and you got to drive all day and you only got the weekends. Or you got a little older and something physical happened to you that you can no longer do it. Those are the things that can happen in the future. And this is something that we talked about when we had the village in Ironwood. And how they wanted to keep it an acre or more. And the developer wanted to have it at 71,000 to about 17,000 square feet. That was easy to maintain, less than 20. Okay, so I like the idea that it's going to have its drainage for the water. That caught my interest too. But what really caught my interest is the HOA, holding the property owners responsible for their front yards at least. Because it would have helped the neighborhood to grow. You know, half acre is beautiful because you could put your RV and all your toys in the bag. It's a wonderful thing to have that space. But it's good to have that, also it's good to be responsible to that space. And don't let it, like we just heard, all the front yards, it rains and all the mud runs off into the curve, into the street, into the sewage. That's what happens when you don't have front yards and no HOA. People do as they like, or what happened a few years ago, Jerry Brown cut the water back and everything went to capat in Moreno Valley. We don't want that. But let's consider HOA and let's build there because we do need that space to be occupied with homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garis. Any other speakers?
No, sorry.
The applicant? Did he speak within the public hearing or outside? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, the bottom, two things I want to say is, first of all, I really want what's best for Moreno Valley. You know, I have a 20,000 square foot lot and it's a challenge to maintain. If there were some compromise where, I mean, where we could come up with homes or, I don't want 7,200 square foot homes, my wife, you know, there's some mix, like, you know, a third of an acre, a quarter acre, or whatever you guys want. I'm super flex, I just want to make the best houses I can in Moreno Valley. So if you guys are interested in giving, let me have a smaller lot, that would also help on the, having the HOA is probably the scariest thing in the conditions. Because having 16 people, which is a pretty small group to maintain stuff, makes me a little bit nervous and spreading around those costs over 16. If I could spread it out over, you know, would I pick the number 25 or 32? That'd be a lot easier. And so if you, so I'm open to any ideas. I'm in no hurry to get, I want the right project for you guys.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and return to discussion slash deliberation. Any questions? I've got a couple, but. Richard Lowell.
I have a question. Landscaping along Cottonwood, who would be maintaining that? Is that city maintained, HOA maintained?
City maintained through maintenance district.
Okay, and the homeowners would pay into it, is it through a tax in addition to the HOA?
They'd be required to ballot into an assessment district.
Thanks.
Do you have a zoning map that shows surrounding?
Yeah, and for some reason, when we go to the slide, it decides to make it this postage stamp size. I'm not sure why it's doing that. I do have a print copy I can bring up to you, Chair Barnes.
Well, cutting to the chase, I think what Commissioner Sims is, might be, referencing is appropriate, but I'd like some discussion of it.
I mean, my sample size is, referencing is very unique to me because I do live in a half acre subdivision that was developed in the early 90s. And then we were out there for years and years and years. And then Richmond American came in, they built, you know, probably 300, 400 homes, 2, 300, whatever it is. And I remember the planning commission meeting and the developer came in, oh, we're going to put in, they wanted to downsize from the R2 to, I think it was R3, to third acre lots. And it was, I mean, there were petitions going around my neighborhood, you know, and all of our neighbor, my neighbors came in and they were upset. And they were just, you know, we want half acre. Well, anyhow, the city went ahead and did the change of zone. And I could just, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things. It's not in the paco, this is not an area, you know, where's a person going to ride a horse here? I don't know if there's a horse trail that goes, if the trail system goes right through this property. But anyhow, this is kind of in a very urbanized part of the city, next to a fairly substantive street with Cottonwood where there's a lot of traffic. So probably it's not a husbandry, animal husbandry type neighborhood that you're going to see there. It's just going to be a big lot neighborhood. And if the pricing point is tight, developer's not going to be able to build an estate-sized house to justify the size of the lot. So anyhow, I could go on and on, the cost of the water, the maintain it, the cost to build, to put in the plant materials and to maintain it and stuff. I don't know, it just seems like, and then the point with, you know, get a denominator bigger to justify the expense of an HOA. I think there's a lot to that. So I certainly am not opposed to the project and, you know, as is, I would go ahead. But I think if the developer is willing to go do a change of zone to do something with a third of an acre or something that's kind of a transitional to the R5 from the half acre to match the sides of the east and west sides, I think that'd be a good project.
The city has had an exorbitant amount of applicants coming in front of us, staring to cram the most amount of houses on the least amount of space. We approve lots down to 4,000 square feet, a neighborhood next to me. I think it's a breath of fresh air that a developer is trying to get some decent-sized lots in the middle of the city. And it fits with the houses to the east and to the west. It doesn't fit with the north and south, but he's not asking for a zone change, so I don't think we should even be talking about it because he's asking for a tentative lot, a tentative map with 16 lots on it. We should discuss what's in front of us, not what we wish he would do or think he should do. We should just discuss what's in front of us.
I don't know, in previous meetings, we don't hesitate to say what we think they should do.
But we're not going to be changing what's presented in front of us. That's not even in our purview to change it from 16 lots to something else.
Yeah, but we can vote no.
Why would you vote no on a good project when the applicant wants it?
But if it's not the right project, if part of our job as planning commissioners is.
He's just offered up the opinion that he's open to higher density.
Tell me a developer that would not want the flexibility to put 500 homes on one acre. Tell me one developer that wouldn't want to do that. Any developer would like to get the most bang for the least amount of buck.
I refer you to the book Basic Economics by Tom Swell, read that. Market drives what market does. And so I heard the developer say, it's tight, we're probably going to see dirt sit out there because this is tight. And.
Try to buy a house in the city, they're $400,000 right now, $500,000. I say, let us see what happens. He wants to put 16 houses on it, let's do it.
I totally agree, I think, I'm looking at the big picture. We're bringing new industry in, we're trying to attract new people.
This is where the CEOs of the Amazon 2 could live.
Exactly, you've got it. But for myself, for myself, if I had a choice right now, buying a home with a bigger lot or where I live, I would buy the home with the bigger lot. Some of us are from, come here from parts of the country where you have acreage and you come to California and you live like this and the houses are so close. It's hard to buy homes in this area at a reasonable price that have acreage and lots that are bigger.
My house is 10 feet away from my neighbors on each side and 30 feet away from my neighbor in the back. The last two nights of the World Series, I can hear which neighbors are Astros fans, which neighbors are Dodgers fans. They're screaming and yelling, I'm like, I don't like that anymore. I want to have a little bit of space, this guy wants space? I say, let's vote on it.
I understand, but just, we have voted for things that, you know, piling, you know, 10 houses on, you know, what should be, you know, like the stuff that's going in across from the Kia or whatever. I mean, those are private streets, townhouse, you know, attached lot. So that's a market-driven thing, the developer thinks he can get that knocked out. All I'm saying is, is the half acre lots in my particular neighborhood have never achieved the pricing that they should achieve and they never will because when you drive through the neighborhood, 50% plus, probably closer to 80% of the lots look like Mead Valley because nobody can afford to maintain it. And there isn't an HOA there to enforce it. And so, if you want to have dirt in your front yard, move to Mead Valley.
Why did this planning commission vote down the project off of Nathan and Ironwood? Because it wasn't the right fit, it was too small a lot. We have a person wanting to put larger lots in the neighborhood that's zoned for larger lots. He doesn't want to change the zone, he wants to put a project in that fits with the zoning, with the neighbors, and we're arguing that he should change it, it doesn't make sense.
With the same arguments we were using in previous projects, because of the high density north and south, you could make the same argument in this case that it's not appropriate.
I'm saying he doesn't want to change anything, he just wants a tentative map. I say, why are we talking about it?
I didn't hear him say that.
I heard, I have a package in front of us.
So.
We're not here to tell him what he should or shouldn't develop.
And we're not doing that.
We're getting way off topic here.
Well, I don't know that we are, I think it's part of the area of our purview to discuss opportunities for each, each project.
Not arguing anything, he's not asking for us anything special, I don't think. Abit hole of trying to design something that's not in front of us. We're not here to design.
I know, I think we're here to.
Had he come in front of the design review committee and say, I want to put 32 houses on here, that's a whole different ballgame, but he's not asking for that. He's open to the idea and if he wants to, after tonight's meeting, drop this case and reapply for a change of zone, that's a whole different conversation. But what's in front of us tonight is a tentative track map? I think we should vote on it as it stands. Nobody out there has discussed any change or any argument of anything.
I don't disagree, I just wanted to get my two cents in. But it is, he spent a lot of money getting it to where it's at, so.
Exactly.
It is what it is.
Speaking armchair engineer for days.
Well, does someone want to make a motion?
I will gladly make a motion. How do you want to deal with the new system? I need to state the motion first.
You should state the motion. I think the one thing you may want to include in the motion, if you haven't remembered that, is the change of that one condition.
Now, we have a motion A12 and a B1, do I read them individually or just make a motion for the resolution?
Resolution's enough, right?
The resolution's, okay.
You can read the whole thing if you'd like. I've often recommended for brevity, you can just recommend the first part before the colon on A and on B, you want to do both of those, at least that much.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-34 and approve resolution 2017-35 with the conditions of approval as amended tonight.
Second?
I have a question on the amended conditions, does that, what does that include? What have we amended?
In condition P9, we would be deleting the reference to document, the document to convey title. We would delete that from that condition.
All right. I would.
That's line A, for the record, that's A of that condition.
If I want to propose another amendment to the conditions, is that an alternate motion or? How do we do that?
Be an alternate motion unless you can convince the mover to add it to his original motion.
I haven't been able to convince him of anything else tonight. But I'll put it out there. I would also like to add a condition requiring the slope between Lot 16 and 15 to be moved to the south so that the top of slope is on the property line, not the toe of the slope.
I do agree with that. Would that be a lot line adjustment to move it over or would the slope be moving?
Or just.
That would be.
Just revise the grading concept to put the slope on the other side of the line, right?
That's correct. It would be a plan check comment once we move forward with the project and we would relocate the slope so that the property line could stay as shown.
Okay, so would I make a condition on that or how would I do that?
No, you just state that you're moving with the conditions that we've just set forth.
Okay, I would like to amend my motion to include the condition set forth by Chairman Barnes.
Do you still have a second for that?
Yes.
Having a motion second, please vote. Motion carries five to zero.
This is a, an action taken by the planning commission, which is an appealable action. If there's any party that feels that they want to appeal this, this is a subdivision map, so it has a 10-day appeal period. The appeal should be directed to the Director of Community Development and it would be scheduled to go before the City Council for hearing within 30 days if such appeal is filed.
Thank you, Rick. Commissioner Sims?
Yes.
I don't disagree at all, Brian, with your statement that we should vote for what we did. We did, I think we all made a good decision on this. But I do want to just say, I do think it's right for us to have this kind of conversation, especially on something like this where a potential, a developer could decide after he hears, oh, I may want to do something before he goes, moves forward. Also, it provides, if anybody's listening out there, they can provide input into future projects. And also, it could be a message to the City Council in making considerations and things like that. So the discussion, I don't think, you know, may be off point per se because we're not going to change the conditions to say, oh, no, we're not going to, we want you to put in three lots A or whatever, or houses to the acre. But I think there's, for the record, to create the deliberation on some things for potential forward change is worth the effort.
Yeah, I agree and I understand. I, it kind of had the feeling that we were going down the way of not approving this project because we wanted to force them to do a zone change and I was just trying to pull us back on point. But I completely agree and I completely understand.
You know, there's always battles, but win wars.
Waxing philosophical, that boy. All right, moving on to case two. PEN17-01, excuse me, 0115, applicant to City Moreno Valley. I'd like getting this approved.
That's, that's what I was going to, I was hoping that you weren't going to say that, but this is a city-initiated change to the development code and Claudia Menrique, our associate planner, will be making the presentation.
Good evening, this is a citywide municipal code amendment to Title IX addressing what was formerly known as the second dwelling unit. SB 1069 and AB 2299 were approved last year in September and became effective in January of this year. Both bills renamed second dwelling units to accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs. Staff proposes to amend the existing ADU ordinance in order to comply with state law. Currently, any ADUs that would come in would be processed under the state regulation. And this would, is until Moreno Valley updates its ordinance. There are a few of the proposed changes that are going to be in the section 9.0913, that's redwelling unit section now. We're adding some definitions, there's some up of the permitting processing. We have some development standards for efficiency units. We have some added restrictions for fire safety along with some new parking requirements. We have some added restrictions for fire safety, along with some new parking requirements. Major change besides the name title to accessory dwelling unit is we're adding two definitions to both the section of ADUs as well as the definition section of the code. Accessory dwelling units can be either attached or detached and must include sleeping areas as well as a kitchen and sanitation. Efficiency unit is new. It's only in attached units. It has a minimum square footage of one hundred and fifty, so it's rather small. It can have a small bathroom facilities and does not need to have a full kitchen. The state has opted to give residents who are developing an ADU some exemptions from parking. There's five of them. This is, will help with units that are near transit stops as well as ones that are potentially near car shares. Some of the additional requirements that are being addressed in tonight's proposal are is the maximum size is twelve hundred square feet. Attached ADUs cannot be greater than fifty percent of the existing space. ADUs are permitted on single-family lots as well as multifamily lots with existing single-family homes. Existing accessory structures may be converted to an ADU. This proposal is exempt under SEQA, and staff recommends approval of resolution 2017-33. It finds that the proposed amendment is exempt under SEQA Section 15282H and recommend that the City Council approve the proposed amendments to Title IX. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to add a little bit additional background. The reason this is before us this evening is not because the city itself wanted to, you know, come up with some new standards for second units or accessory dwelling units. This is really forced on us by the state. The state, as you have probably read over the last year and even years before that, has been looking at ways to facilitate and to remove obstacles or making it easier for people to get access to housing. The accessory dwelling unit is considered to be an opportunity for people who are looking for what might be affordable housing, opportunity to do that as well. The accessory dwelling unit is the same thing as the second dwelling we had in our ordinance before where it can be rented out to somebody else. You still have to have the primary owner of the site either residing in the accessory dwelling or in the primary home. So you have to have the property owner on the site. But the reason for the second unit is to possibly generate some revenue so that that homeowner, the property owner, can actually generate some revenue. I will say that the accessory dwelling unit standards were somewhat derived from really a Northern California focus, and so a lot of the focus seems to be on smaller, compact developments that are closer to transit opportunities that don't necessarily need parking requirements. The parking allowances that are in this are a pretty significant change. Pretty much any unit that comes into the city is probably going to be in one of those categories and may be able to request relief from the parking requirement. And we just want you to know that it's not because we want to give away the parking requirement. We're going to be forced to actually do that because we have to comply with the state regulations. The other thing I want to point out is, you may recall that this second dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit topic did come up a while back, and as Claudia's pointed out in the presentation, the state law was actually being crafted back in 2016. It was actually approved in, I think, September of 2016, and it went into effect January of this year. During that time, the City Council was interested in possibly getting a study session on accessory dwellings for various reasons, a lot of other things going on. That study session with the City Council never took place, and so instead of holding off and not updating our ordinance because our ordinance does need to comply with the state regulations, we have moved forward with making the change to our code to just make sure that we are compliant with the state regulations. The item before you, I'm not sure that Claudia pointed out in the staff report, is that your action tonight is in advisory capacity because this is a change to the development code, which ultimately requires City Council action. So after your action this evening, we will be taking that recommendation forward to the City Council for the final action.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody having questions?
I do. Does this relate in any way to these rentals that people do online for, like, you can use somebody's apartment for a week or two weeks? And how does that affect a neighborhood rather than a person being there over long term?
It does not fall in the category of like an Airbnb where people are doing short-term rentals or renting the rooms on a short-term basis. That's not the intent. I did talk with our finance staff this afternoon about that particular topic. We don't have any regulations with regard to that topic, but this is not something that we think is in that realm at this point.
Commissioner Sims?
For context purposes, how many of the secondary units are processed through the city prior to this change? Is it a little, a lot, you know, on an annual basis perhaps?
I don't have an exact number, but approximately two to three a year. Not too many.
What differentiates an efficiency unit from somebody who's renting out a bedroom to a college student?
The distinction would be the efficiency unit does have to have at least a partial kitchen and a bathroom facility that is for that particular unit itself, where somebody could be renting a room, maybe actually using the kitchen facility or the bathroom as part of the main house. That would be one clear distinction. The efficiency unit, if it's treated as an accessory dwelling unit, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Claudia, cannot have a direct access to the primary residence, has to have its own entrance, where somebody who's renting a room can go through the regular front door and any other door into the house, and so there's no distinction there. That's two things or at least three things.
Yeah, I know. Board my mortgage. Okay, and then something caught my eye about the written agreement with the city that is required when, I guess, an applicant applies for a accessory dwelling unit or an efficiency What's the purpose of that agreement? What is it stipulating?
That agreement is actually being carried forward in our current regulations, and it basically is a contract, so to speak, almost, where we know that the applicant is acknowledging that these are the requirements for having this second unit consistent with our municipal code. We think that that is important to continue to have. It's not a requirement of the state regulations. It's something that's actually being carried forward from our current regulations.
Okay, all right. I was just curious, wondered where that came from. Okay, Commissioner Sims?
Yeah, I noticed when I was reading through the materials that there, it appears that there was, if somebody wanted to convert a garage into auxiliary, I guess...
Efficiency unit?
Efficiency, let's say, because it would be attached to the house. How does the city handle that? I mean, if the require, is there, through the administrative plan check process, would there be a requirement for a carport or some kind of other thing to replace the covered parking that was already designated for the single-family residents that had that?
The state doesn't allow. If it's going to be an attached unit, we can't place any parking requirements on the project or any additional parking.
Say, if it's going to be what kind of a unit?
Attached. Detached is still, has the requirement of one parking space per bedroom unless it meets one of the five exemptions, which they need to provide with their application. So if they came in and said, "We're within a half-mile of a bus stop," they need to show us the distance and what bus stop they would be using.
So when somebody would come over and say, "I'm going to convert my two-car garage into whatever this, the four-hundred-and-fifty square feet or whatever it is that attached, the largest could be," it's probably not a whole garage. A garage is, a garage bigger than that. I'm not sure off the top of my head, but anyhow, long story short, is that would have to go through the Title 22 calculations for the air conditioning and all that kind of stuff. It couldn't just be close up the front garage door, you know, wall that in and...
Right. It would need to come in as administrative plot plan, so we would be, planning would be reviewing what the new elevation would look like, as well as then going through the building process.
This, I mean, I'm not against this, but it seems like there's the potential, what was a prior thing, when they have to have three onsite parking toilets? I think you better codify that pretty quick, otherwise this is going to be challenging, potentially. But if there's only two of them a year or something like that.
Anything else?
How is the distance to the nearest parking, or nearest public transit station measured? Is it straight line or is it as you, along path of travel?
I actually went to a training on this one. It's really ambiguously defined. A lot of the cities are very concerned about the way the state wrote the regulations because it just says you have to be in proximity to transit. If somebody wanted to come in and make an argument that that is to a bus stop or to a transit stop, somebody could also come in and say, "No, that's just proximity to a bus line, and there happens to be a bus line that runs through my neighborhood, and I want to make that argument." We're asking that the applicant be required, and that's one of the things that Claudia was touching on, is we're going to make it a requirement of the applicant to demonstrate to us how they're meeting any of those five criteria. And so we hope that that's going to give us a little bit more opportunity to evaluate that circumstance and, you know, discuss it with the applicants, and maybe over time, the state will actually make some clarifications on that, but right now, it's a very gray area. I'm sorry, I can't give you a definitive answer on that.
Building on what Commissioner Sims was saying hypothetically, what's the difference between a guy who comes in and says, "I want to add an efficiency unit by converting my garage to two bedrooms," or whatever, and a guy who comes in and says, "I want to convert my garage to two bedrooms"? Is either process acceptable? Or does he have to use the E-word, and then he has to sign the contract with the city, and all these regulations come into play? Or he can just do a building modification and end up with the same physical product but not the criteria that comes with calling it an efficiency unit?
If he wants to consider it, instead of just calling it an efficiency unit, let's call it an accessory dwelling unit, because an efficiency unit is a form of an accessory dwelling. So the accessory dwelling will have to have the standard that says it has its own entry and own entrance to the living unit. It will have to come in and go through all the building and fire codes, and has to be established as a unit that has a bathroom facility and at least a partial kitchen. That'll be confirmed instead of just converting it to two bedrooms. If somebody wanted to come in and just convert their garage to two bedrooms, they're going to be held to the requirement that they do have to replace the parking that's required for the unit. That's going to be automatic. But it's going to be, I'm sorry, it's going to be an automatic requirement to replace the parking if it is an addition of bedroom space. But if it's an addition of an accessory dwelling unit, and they can satisfy one of the other five exemption criteria, then the parking may not have to be replaced. But if it's just adding bedrooms, they're going to have to replace the parking. I don't know if that's coming across clear or not.
Well, maybe I'm not understanding all of it, but it seems like there's this huge gray area between a guy making improvements and not calling it an efficiency unit or whatever the term was, and a guy who does.
I think the distinguishing characteristic between the efficiency unit and the conversion of your garage to two bedrooms is the fact that if he wants to get the efficiency unit approved, he has to have a separate entry into the property, and it has to have its own...
Kitchenette.
Kitchen, a little kitchenette and a bathroom. So, and then he can, then that owner can then get, if he can meet the exemptions for the parking, wiggy out of the replacement of the garage parking. If he wanted just to come in and ID, I have a two-bedroom house, I'm going to have two more kids, and I need four bedrooms, and I'm just going to put a, make my garage into two more bedrooms, he's not going to have, then, and he goes through, doesn't do it just on the weekend job and comes in and permits it, then he's going to have to go build a carport or whatever the city requires for replacement of the covered parking.
Seems like an odd circumstance that has the potential for some unintended consequences. But we're here to just advise, and I don't think that it, in the long run, matters that much. So, any other questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Let me find it here real quick. Being that this is a requirement of the state of California, that our city was...
Hold on, this does require a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well...
My apologies. The chair has dropped the ball again. So, having no further questions, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do we have a speaker?
Yes, we do. Rafael Brujas.
Commissioner Brujas, please come forward.
Thank you. Chair, commissioners, staff, you know, when you sit back there and you start listening to some of the confusion that goes on, you're going to have a lot of lawbreakers, because it's a lot easier just to break the law and make it a two-bedroom apartment and don't tell nobody. You'll have those, okay? Because if somebody's going to have to go through what you just mentioned, the private entrance or remodeling the garage in two-bedroom and going through a carport and everything, they'd rather just say, "Okay, thank you," and walk away and just do it. And I've seen plenty of those, especially when you knock on people's door campaigning. You see who opens the door and what door opens. So you have a lot of that, okay? So that was a really tough one. Now, I like the seventy, you know, I like people to be able to build homes or another twenty-place behind their existing home, but I never thought, I'm not thinking of track homes. I'm thinking of the R2, of the R3s, the R4s, and the R5s, because there's plenty of them in Moreno Valley, and some of them may want to build a second home. Like one of the slides, because the door was open today to that ten-acre, twenty-thousand square feet. He has the right, those people have the right to build a home in the back, because anything over seventy-two-hundred square foot, you have the right to pull a permit and to see if you're able to put a house in the back. So in one of those slides, I had a nice little blue house with green trimming and a brown fence, and I looked at it, I said, "There goes a twenty-thousand-square-foot lot with a little house in the back." That could happen on cottonwood, because we just agreed to it. Mr. Sim, if he would have persuaded, and he did, he did persuade the applicant for a moment to go down a little smaller, okay? You know, one-third is pretty big, too, and he was being real honest about his neighborhood and some of his neighbors, you know? It would have been nice to see a one-third, maybe twenty-five, thirty-two houses. Ten thousand acres is a lot. I live on a ten-thousand-acre. And you know how much money costs to cement that alone? That's a lot of money. That's not counting the pool or the deck or the carport or the port in the back, nothing. It's a lot of money. So I hope that you approve this. Not to see track homes build homes in the back of, but people that have a lot of acreage, so they can get a chance. But if we can have a chance to change someone's mind for the better good of the city, we should talk about that. should talk about that.
Thank you, Rafael. All right, any other speakers? Doesn't appear so. Very empty out there. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Now, would we like to deliberate? Make a motion?
Well, I would say this is an unfunded mandate from the state of California to create more code enforcement work for our fine city staff, but so be it. It's legislation, so you have to do what you have to do. So, I'm willing to make a motion to approve it. I think it's pretty, I thought staff did a good job. It's pretty thoughtful and, you know, adjusting the 1250 to 1200. I think they dotted i's and crossed the t's on this thing to fit at least the spirit of what the state has mandated.
So the motion, when it is made, if he's making a motion, would be a recommendation to the city council to approve it, because you're not, you guys won't be the approval body.
So, I don't know if there's any other deliberations, but I'm willing to make the...
Anyone want to second that?
I'll second.
Is that a motion to approve both the resolutions before you?
Yes, I would recommend the planning commission approve, recommend approval of the resolutions that are under, under consideration here and take, to have for city council approval or consideration.
Motion from Commissioner Sims, second from Commissioner Baker. So, let's vote.
I don't have a voting thing.
Oh, hit your... Bear with us.
So for clarity, we're motioning to approve the resolution PEN 17, or 2017-33.
Oh, in that case, all votes. All votes have been cast. Motion carries five to zero. Do you have a wrap-up?
The item before you is a legislative action which requires a city council as the ultimate approval authority on this. Your recommendation will be carried forward to the city council for that action. We don't yet have a date set, but we do expect it to probably be before the end of the year.
Next on the agenda, other commission business. Do you have any other commission business?
No, there's no other, there's no other commission business, sorry.
There is no other commission business. Staff comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair Barnes. Looking at the lightness of the agenda tonight, but we've had a lot of discussion, I did put together a few slides just to kind of bring the commission up to speed on the activity that's been going on in the city over the last year. It'll take me a few minutes, and if you want me to go faster, I'm happy to. There's no action to be taken on this particular presentation this evening, it's really for information purposes, since we haven't met in a couple of months. And there's been a lot of activity going on in the city. People watching at home might enjoy seeing this as well. It gives a flavor of what we're pretty proud of here at the city in terms of the economic development activity we've been generating. Okay, so, as a activity overview, what I'm going to cover is residential development, commercial development, and some industrial development. Building, major permits that have been issued, we issue lots of minor permits every day, so I'm not counting all those. These are really kind of the major ones that you see out there. Residential units, 218 residential permits have been issued in the last year. The commercial permits are 37. I apologize, the slide, I think it got reformatted when we put it up here. But hotels, we've permitted one, but we've got three other ones in the works that we hope to have permitted very soon. And then industrial development, these are the large-scale industrial developments that we've had. We've had two major projects permitted. On the residential side, this is an example of some of the phases of where the construction is. This is a Lennar development up Pigeon Pass, just north of the high school. Some of those units are still in the framing stage, some of them in the, closer to completion with the finishes on the exterior, the roofing being put on. And I believe that some of the units there are even already close to putting in the landscaping. So that, that development is moving pretty rapidly and they're phasing it in pretty nicely. Pacific Communities has some completed homes in the area. RSI also has some completed homes. So we've got some of the people already moving into, I think that image on the right shows the completed homes with the front yard landscaping. And one of the units with the garage door open shows that people have already moved in. A while back, the commissioner had asked some questions about the landscaping in the new homes. I hope that this is better than what we had seen the last time we brought this. It still may look a little bit sparse, and I did get some questions asked about some of the recent projects that we've signed off on the landscaping. We're still trying to follow a drought-tolerant landscaping, but the plant materials that are being planted here are supposed to be faster growing and hopefully over a short period of time, they'll fill in. So it may look sparse, but the idea is to make them more robust, and I've been working with the staff, to make sure that we are encouraging the residential builders to, now that we're not in a drought condition, to be thinking of maybe some, some more attractive Just overall, those 218 units are represented by several home builders. We've got RSI out there, KB Homes, Lennar, Frontier, Pacific Communities, and Metric Homes. So we're not just attracting one, we're attracting multiple home builders. New residential projects that not yet in construction, but have been before you as a body or one that is currently pending, this is the number of homes that you guys have looked at. Mission Pacific was the Legacy Park project, Rocos Grandes, Bella Vista, Chara Villa, and Latco were all apartment projects. And then the bridge development, which is the current proposal on the Reno Valley Ranch Golf Course, they're looking at about 416 units on the, on the driving range that's still going through the process and should be becoming before you in the next few months, we hope. Commercial and retail development, you may have heard our economic development team touting the success that we had with what's called the Quarter Project. The Quarter Project is a mixed-use development of some sorts, has a gas station, it has, with a convenience store attached to it, it has two potential restaurant pads, one multi-tenant building, and then the key on that site is two hotel sites. And one of those hotel sites has already gone through the permitting process, and the site is currently being graded, and this shows the current grading activity. We're very proud that we've been able to attract a new auto dealership. This is Hyundai, which is getting close to opening. They haven't actually set the, the opening date, but we think it'll be maybe before the end of the year. So that's what this one is. On the commercial side, we also have continued development over in the Towne Gate area. The Towne Gate Promenade area is the area close to where Applebee's and Mimi's and Tilted Kilt and the new Aldi's Market went in. Well, right in that same parking lot, if you've been over there lately, you see this pad that's being built on. And this will have three potential tenants in the future. We know who two of the potential tenants are, but because they haven't actually gone public, we don't want to say it in public and kind of spoil their thunder, or steal their thunder. In addition, the, just activity going on in all of our other shopping centers, at Canyon Springs Plaza, we've issued permits for a variety of new businesses. We've got Country Inn and Suites, which is one of those new hotels that we think is going to be going into construction here pretty soon. This is over in the Village area off of Sunnymead Boulevard, right adjacent to SR 60. It was entitled many years ago, but they're now moving forward, and we think it's going to be a nice, attractive addition to Sunnymead. The Golden Corral is one that I am, I guess maybe going ahead, I think this has been publicized, so I'm putting it out there, but Golden Corral is looking at another site along Sunnymead Boulevard, just west, or just east of Chuck E. Cheese. Rental Beach Plaza, we had a new AT&amp;T store open in and another restaurant over in the rental marketplace. Commercial activity that's not retail, we're seeing some activity with medical-type uses, Riverside University Health System. This is a 200,000 square foot medical office building, which has been approved in the parking lot right next to the hospital. They're going through plan check, and they've actually allowed us an opportunity to review the onsite development, so that's, that's, that's good. And they're also going through the state architect for their approval of their building. And then you guys saw recently the Main Street Transitional Care Facility, which is a 90-bed facility, which was approved, was entitled. They haven't come in yet for development, and we're not sure if they are going to, but it's approved, so it's entitlement on the site, and we'll see what happens with that. On the industrial side, we're still seeing continued development for large box logistics-type facilities. These images are the one that's right here, close to the Civic Center, right across the street. It's been going up pretty fast. It's a little over 600,000 square feet. And then just a little further east of that, we recently brought a project before you by Core 5. This is a 99,000 square foot, almost 100,000 square foot building, which is going through plan check, so we see that they're going to be breaking ground pretty soon also. In the south industrial area, I don't have any images of these, but you can see the size of these developments that are progressing, going into construction is pretty significant. And then last but not least, the other stuff I was telling you, really usually comes through our current planning group, and that's Chris Ormsby's team, so he's been very active. But on the advanced planning side, and I've got Mark Gross here this evening, he's been equally busy and maybe even more so in some regards with getting our comprehensive general plan off the ground. We did release the RFP in October. We're expecting to get proposals here November 9th. We'll be negotiating that contract and hopefully issuing a notice to proceed right at the beginning of the year. And it's a very aggressive schedule. It's tied to the strategic plan that the city manager and the city council worked very hard at approving back in August of 2016. And in that document, it targets the completion of the general plan update by August of 2019. And so we're, we are going to try and be very firm on meeting that deadline. In addition, we've done some studies on Nason Corridor before, but the city owns about 65 acres of land at the corner of Nason and Alessandro. We were able to secure a grant, which I think I've told this commission in the past. It's taken a little bit of time to go through the SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, process to actually procure a consultant, but that is in progress. We're actually very, very close. Claudia's been working very hard and Mark is also involved in that. Once we get the consultant started, they've given us a year to finish it, but because the information that'll come out of it will be tied to the general plan update, we're going to be pushing that that get done closer to like a nine-month period of time. And then also, we're happy to say that we've been able to secure some additional outside grants. This one is about $65,800 from Western Riverside Council of Governments. The money was secured just a couple of months ago, and we're now in the consultant selection process. The RFP will go on the street, I think, within the next week. We hope to do that in very timely fashion. And again, because the healthy community study will be feeding into the health element that we're trying to develop in the general plan, we want to get that done also in a very timely manner. So I've put up here nine months, and that'll be a very aggressive schedule. I think that is my last slide, maybe not, this is, I'm sorry. The last slide here is, in addition to the other work that we're doing here for our own city, we have to monitor what goes on around us. And so, in Mark's team, there's a lot of notice of preparations that come in, EIR documents, sometimes mitigated negative declarations for projects that are going on in the city of Riverside, the county of Riverside, city of Paris, March GAP are the ones right around our border. But we don't stop there. Sometimes if we see something that is large enough that has the potential of causing some impacts in our city, we'll actually comment on those as well. And there was recently one in the county of Riverside. Actually, I think it's County of San Bernardino it might be, which is up off of the 10 freeway, just over in the Beaumont Cherry Valley area that we were looking at. If you've read in the newspaper, it's a pretty large facility. And then we also track legislation, and we also follow the sequel regulations, and this is kind of a joint effort between both our advanced planning and current planning teams. So we're staying pretty busy. What I didn't show up here is the amount of activity that comes through our Development Services Center. And last year, we, we continued to implement the Simplicity System. The Simplicity System is our development tracking system and our permitting system that's making our activities much more transparent, so applicants can actually log on and see, you know, what's in the hopper. Hopefully, in the future, as that thing continues to grow, they'll actually be able to see how it's progressing and where it's at, and maybe even be able to see some of the documents, the more we can load up into the system. So that's, that's been working very well. With that, I'll stop, and you guys, a nice evening. I know that some people may want to get off to places, it's still an early hour, so...
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate all that information. Seems that lots, lots going on in the city, and that's a good thing.
Is, is, do you make this presentation to the council?
I have not. I don't want to take the credit for this being my great idea. This is actually your chairman, who thought that we could use some of the time on the agenda this evening to make you guys aware. So I, I appreciate Chairman Barnes asking me to make this. It actually makes me feel good about what we're doing, because sometimes you get lost in the heat, you don't realize how much is really going on.
Well, I, I, I mean, I don't speak for the other commissioners, but I think this is, I mean, as the sea rises, all the boats go up. And so, I mean, when you see this kind of, that's significant, significant activity. And I particularly like the health, the whole medical health thing. I think the city, I mean, I know we have our logistics stuff and all that, but I really think that that's, you know, the Economic Development Agency, or arm of the, should really hammer at trying to get as much as they possibly can and get as much synergy out of that. Those are, you know, higher-skill jobs and put a lot of people to work, even with the, with the care facility type things, you know, there's, people need help, and that's, why not have Moreno Valley providing that help? So, I, I like, and anyhow, I think that's a, I would think it'd be very good to have the presentation made, you know, to the, to the council, let them know what's going on. I mean, they prior, they do know what's going on, but it's good at the council meeting, there's a little bit more notoriety and attendance and whatnot, so...
Thank you. I agree totally. Anybody else? Any wrap-ups? All right. Well, staff, thank you very much. Appreciate your patience and your help. And I guess with that, we will adjourn the meeting until the...
Can I add just one thing? We are going to, we are going to have a meeting on November 9th. It'll be a very light agenda at this point, but we have one project that has been, came in very fast, we're going to, we're going to process it. It has to do with repainting a building. May seem kind of simple, but we'll have one item on your agenda. It's the large building right down here at the end of Veterans Way and New Hope.
Okay. Right.
I'd like to wish everyone a happy Halloween. Halloween is Tuesday. If you're not here at city council chambers, make sure you're out trick-or-treating, and if you are, be safe, wear something light-colored. My kids will be out there, they look forward to it every year. So happy Halloween, everybody.
Thanks, Commissioner Lowell. All right, we are officially adjourned till November 9th, here in these chambers. Thanks, everyone.